Welcome to the July 5th, 2023 meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a Citizens Advisory Committee to the Board of County Commissioners on Land Use Planning Matters such as Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All planning commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all planning commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not yet been held. My name is Eric Casino. I'm this season's chair residing District Two. We'll start our introductions online with Commissioner Day and then we'll move down here through the boardroom. Commissioner Day, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Commissioner Day, District One.
Ellen Wheatley, District One.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Joel Hanson, District Three.
And the passenger District One.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I hope everybody has had a chance to look over an agenda and if so, I entertain a motion on it.
So moved second.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing now called for the vote. He's absolute.
Uh, Mr. Hanson.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Mr. Wheatley.
Hi.
Mr. Nelson.
Hi.
Mr. Passenger.
Hi.
Vice Chair Day.
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi, the agenda is accepted. All right, with that, um, has everybody had a chance to look over our June 21st, 2023 meeting minutes? And if so, I entertain a motion on those.
Don't move. Second.
It's gonna move in seconds. Is there any discussion on those meeting minutes? With that, call for the vote.
Mr. Hanson.
Abstain.
Mr. Oh, sorry, you, Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Mr. Wheatley.
Hi.
Mr. Nelson.
Hi.
Mr. Passenger.
Hi.
Vice Chair Day.
Hi.
You know.
Hi, those minutes are approved, accepted in the audio as the official meeting record. With that, we'll move on to the next portion of our meeting, which is the public communication portion. We're gonna start out here in the boardroom, but for those that are participating via Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option to address the planning commission. You'll be promoted to panelists when it's your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your screen. If you're dialing in and press star nine to raise your hand, make sure to also choose star six to unmute yourself. The three minute timer will show on one of the screens above to help you keep track of time. But we are gonna start in the boardroom first if there's anybody that would like to address the planning commission. All right. Uh, how about anybody online? If so, raise your hand. And can't read that. Oh, Loretta Seppen, Loretta Seppen, you're, you're up.
Okay, here I am. Good evening. Loretta Seppen in Olympia, Washington. I'm here to talk about a process issue. Um, from time to time, it's, um, seems necessary to allow for community input even after a hearing. This is on my mind because of an issue that happened in the city of Olympia, just quite recently. Uh, the planning commission there was addressing one of those perennial issues, parking, um, how many parking spaces there'll be in housing. And at the very, after having a hearing, getting all the input, at the last minute, they changed, um, their direction and passed something that no one had had a chance to speak about. It went forward to the council and the council heard a lot from the community. And, uh, the council had to change things again and eventually a pa- uh, uh, an action passed. And even the people, there are many of us who agreed with the actual decision. But regardless of whether people agreed or disagreed, they are ups, we are as a community upset with the process because people did not have a chance to really speak to the actual decision that was made, uh, at the planning commission. I think you, you may be at a position like that right now on an issue that's, that you're talking about tonight. I'd ask you to consider in that case, uh, to open up public communication again and take, um, have a hearing or at least allow for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the planning commission? Take another shot here in the board, just in case anyone changed their minds. Okay, well, that will conclude public communication for this evening. So we'll move on to our next item of business, which is a work session number three on CPA 21, the POG site specific land use plan and rezon amendment with Amelia Schwartz.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and pull that up.
Well, we're ready for that quick question.
Sure.
For Loretta Seppen's question, I've always not been very clear on the definition of allowed. An allowance for public comment if things have dramatically changed, what we're deciding on. Um, I thought there was an allowance for that, can you clarify?
Well, I guess I'm not, I'm not totally sure on the policies myself, but I do understand that since we're an advisory group, um, and the public would still be allowed to address the issue at the Board of County Commissioner level that we would not have any problems with not allowing the public an opportunity to talk, but maybe this is something that staff could address. Um, if, uh, Manager Davis had a moment to be able to.
Thanks for your video, sorry. I thought, um, and Scott, you can break around because this has been a while. Typically, the planning commission doesn't always take comments on the items that have already been heard and you've closed your public comment period on them. Um, that being said, the planning commission could vote to reopen a comment period that will lengthen the amount of review time of course. Um, and you probably want to hear tonight, um, on that item before you make a decision on something like that, but it would end up delaying, um, the process. For that, how long would depend on the comment period if you choose to do that. But typically, the planning commission has not reopened a comment period after their closer comment, their public hearing comment period. So.
So is that our discretion to reopen a comment period?
It would be your discretion at this point. Um, so I don't think there's anything in the rules to directly barring that or anything like that. Um, but it will delay your decision making process and of course, you will have to go through the full announcement process and you have to decide on a time period for something like that. But it's not typically something we've done in the past, specifically because we do have a setup in Thurston County where the Board of County Commissioners also holds a public hearing on whatever the planning commission recommends. So.
On, on the short end of things, what kind of delay would it create?
Um, depending on the length of time, um, for the public comment period, um, it would delay it by at least that amount of time. Plus, we would have to take some time to do the announcement. So probably three to four weeks, I would think. Um, is a good one. So it would be next month for any decision to come out of the planning commission on this. So. Um, and we'd wanna make sure to firm up whatever, um, we're gonna put forward for public comment. We're gonna, you're between to choose to do that. So.
Does that make sense to you, Commissioner Hanson?
And we can, I know Maya. You know, Maya and I are also planning to chat more about that as well in terms of what the process is like, is moving forward because it is a little bit different than other projects because there has been so much public participation. We were planning to even have an open house between the planning commission and the board to make sure that folks had an opportunity to digest whatever that recommendation looks like. Um, so yeah, it'd be great to continue this conversation once we get through the presentation, but we have been trying to creatively.
And generally supportive of Commissioner Nelson's views that the end of public comment is the end, but if we make a drastic departure or change in the discussion, that's reopening. So I don't know where we stand on this one, but.
No, I think that's fair comment. Yeah. All right. Um, well, with that, um, are you ready to go, Amelia?
Ready to go.
Great, thank you.
Hi, hello commissioners. I'm Amelia Schwartz, Associate Planner with Community Plan. Tonight, we're gonna be going over CPA 21, the POG site specific land use plan and rezoning amendment. This is the third work session. We're hoping to get a recommendation next. So a quick overview, uh, the POG parcel in question is southwest of the Offutt Lake community. You can kinda see it relative. The closer, this is the 1.48 acre in question, make a partial impression. Alright, so this is part of the 2022, 2023 Comprehensive Plan Docket. The property owner has requested to amend their land use and rezone their 1.5 acre parcel at 12625 Old Highway 99 Southeast. It is currently rural residential resource, one unit per five acres. They are requesting neighborhood convenience commercial. During the planning commission comment period, two written comments were received in support of the requested POG amendment. No comments were received in opposition from the community. Public comment in support from the Thurston Economic Development Council and an Offutt Lake landowner cited the convenience for nearby residents and maintenance of rural character with the neighborhood convenience designation. Additional comments after the hearing have been saved for Board of County Commissioner review. And so then there's also an image of the current use of the property. There were some additional commissioner questions last week. Some of them were on the prior special use permits for the southern adjacent parcel that could be considered an option three. The hearing examiner rulings were attached with the information commissioners received in 1995 and 2006 rural decisions. Additional considerations for consistency with state and local policies as well as the May 17th, 2023 staff report consistency section are also listed in today's staff memo for review. And this is just a slide going over the consistencies and inconsistency that were listed in the staff report from May. So some of the consistencies of this landowner's request are related to how the comprehensive plan lists neighborhood commercial and its guidelines. So neighborhood commercial commonly serves a population of less than 5,000. It should be clustered. This is actually more consistent with option three, as in we wouldn't have a gap if this is chosen. Uh, it has minimal natural resource impacts for this property in question as well as the southern adjacent property. Neighborhood commercials should be on a collector or arterial road, Old Highway 99 is. Um, they should be in convenient locations and more widely separated than in UGAs. This is also correct. It has been requested through a legislative rezon, which is one of the ways that this consists. And this would be a priority business. The inconsistency would be that neighborhood commercial in rural areas has a guideline to not exceed one acre in size. Alright, then some additional considerations from our work session on June 21st. Um, what's good? Option two and three are partially inconsistent with the neighborhood convenience commercial destination because both options are in excess of the one acre guideline. A side note that to that is that the majority of neighborhood commercial areas within Thurston County are in excess of this one acre guideline and the county should reevaluate the size limitation as part of the periodic update, which has been noted and given to staff. A designation of neighborhood convenience commercial would be more consistent for the existing businesses and commercial use occurring on the southern adjacent parcel. The location is suitable for neighborhood commercial because it is directly between an active railroad and Old Highway 99 Southeast, um, which conjoins into a triangle with commercial at the southern end with those existing neighborhood convenience commercial parcels. Therefore, this area could be, uh, better for our commercial rather than residential at this time. The location directly supports the local community as the neighborhood convenience commercial designation is intended. And the final consideration, all received comments from the public were in support of the requested change. So we'll go over the options. Option one is no change, maintain the concurrent future land use and zoning. This would make no changes to the comp plan or official zoning map. It does not meet the request of the applicant. The land use and zoning stays the same, which allows for limited commercial uses. And it does not address public comment. Option two is amending the land use and associated zoning of the applicant's parcel only for rural residential resource 152 neighborhood convenience commercial. This would amend the future land use map as well as the official zoning map. It rezones a total of 1.48 acres to neighborhood commercial. It meets the request of the applicant and the public comment. It's inconsistent with the land use designation and the comprehensive plan because it exceeds the one acre maximum size guideline. And it does not maintain a consistent cluster of neighborhood convenience commercial sites along Old Highway 99. Option three is amending the land use and associated zoning of the applicant's parcel as well as the southern adjacent parcel for rural residential resource 152 neighborhood convenience commercial. This would amend the future land use map and the official zoning map. It would rezone a total of approximately 3.68 acres to neighborhood convenience commercial. It meets the request of the applicant and public comment. The southern property owner has been contacted and they have indicated their approval of this, this proposal. Just like option two, it would be inconsistent with the land use designation in the comprehensive plan as it exceeds the one acre maximum size guideline. Um, but in terms of creating a consistent block of land use, it is more consistent than option two for maintaining consistent block. Right, and then I have some options for recommendation draft motions. I've made them a little bit easier to read. So I hope that helps. The end, but this is the most helpful.
You wanna start off?
I'm certainly, yeah, because I respect, respectfully disagree with much of the analysis presented in the memo. And, um, as you may recall from, uh, the last meeting, I proposed that, I guess it's option one, no change. Um, because, um, I believe that is the most consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, it's certainly, as it is right now, it's consistent with how it's zoned, it's single residence. Um, it's notable that the property contains a standard trees that are on their way to maturity. It looks pretty clear. Um, it is located several hundred feet away from the intersection. And I believe that one of the inconsistencies, uh, with the comprehensive plan is that the comp plan calls for neighborhood convenience to be at the intersection. And there already is neighborhood convenience at the intersection. There's a gas station with a mini mart. And next to that is a bar and grill. And then there's a coffee shop. And then you leapfrog the property, or no, I guess it's the coffee shop. So, so what the comp plan calls for specifically is clustering around the main building at the intersection. That's what the comp plan says. And I don't know why we have a comp plan if we don't pay attention to what it's calling for. Um, so it's currently consistent with the comp plan. Um, I'll remind you that, um, the designation that it's currently under is to maintain the rural character of the county to buffer environmentally sensitive areas and resource management areas for incompatible activities to maintain a balance between human uses and the natural environment. And I'll remind you that there is a canopy, a forest canopy study coming. And if you look at the, uh, aerial photo, you can see that it's kind of part of a consistent forested area, even though it's bisected by, um, the railroad. Um, I think that there are a lot of reasons why the proposed use is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, one of the big ones is my understanding, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but from my reading of the comp plan, if you have, you know, uh, neighborhood convenience is precisely that. It's not to support the economy. It's, it, there's nothing about localism in that designation. It's simply about providing convenience to the specifically rural population. And in the, in the application, it was made pretty clear that the convenience and the interest is in the, um, Offutt Lake Lambert. And my understanding of the comp plan is that if you're going to, the preference is for anything other than specifically neighborhood convenience use, which is specifically targeted for the convenience of the rural population, um, that other kinds of commercial development, it's preferred that they be located within the Lambert, not outside of the Lambert. So, um, I'm sure there's other, other things as well. Oh yeah, one of them is, uh, part of the comp plan says that, um, as much natural vegetation as possible, especially large trees should be preserved as development occurs. Um, I disagree with the memo. Um, it wasn't brought up this, um, this evening, but the memo cites, uh, residential comp plan policy, which I think doesn't apply at all to this situation. Um, what else? Could you, could you tell me which? Um, in the memo, I, yeah, I don't have the, the, one of the, it might be the old memo, you know, the original ones. So it references the housing and residential densities policy, which is irrelevant to, to this. Um, what else do we have? Um, yeah, it, the application itself, to me, it was concerning that pretty much none of the statements about the intentions and purposes and reasons for the rezoning, um, had to do with benefiting the local rural community. It was very focused on Offutt Lake and, 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 um, one of the staff memos also talked about how it supports surrounding businesses, and that's not the purpose of this kind of zoning. And then above all, uh, most importantly, um, I believe the comp plan says that you have, and I think we talked about this last time, there has to be a change uh, in the circumstances of the property to justify a rezoning. And that's a really significant point. So that is actually in a list of, of reasons for a change in zoning, and one of them is a legislative rezon. A legislative rezon. Where, where does it talk about that? Yeah, hold on, let me pull that up. Got a lot of documents, so it may take me a little while to find out which one it was. So are you talking about goal one B10 from the original staff report? Um, so much, it's option D. It is, um, or the Thurston County pursues a legislative reason. Well, is this Thurston County pursuing a legislative reason or is it? It is a Docket item. Okay. Well, that's interesting, interesting. Well, does that mean that Thurston County wants this? I don't understand what the meaning of pursue is in this. Uh, Thurston County has brought it to have a decision made on. But it doesn't have a position. It's, it was an applicant request. So would that be a legislative reason anyway?
Yes. Pretty much, I mean, this came up a few years ago. And it's a decision that I largely disagree with, but Thurston County decided that any rezon property is a legislative decision.
So some more background on that too. There were a couple of court decisions that actually made that decision for rezonings that are not already authorized by a comprehensive plan amendment. If they're not already authorized, it requires a legislative action and it's for legislative and not quasi judicial. So that's more of what that speaks to. Um, so no site specific comprehensive plan amendment is technically quasi judicial. They're all legislative.
Well, okay, so I guess I'm speaking to the intent of the comp plan. And, and another element of intent of the comp plan is it's, it's pretty clear. The language says they're trying to discourage a string along an arterial and they're trying to encourage a cluster around an intersection. And I did note that, um, you know, one reason that you might think of for that is that, uh, rezones are not supposed to, you know, we as a commissioner supposed to consider whether there might be a further demand for, you know, um, county services as a result of the rezon. And one could imagine traffic might be one of those issues. And I noted that with, uh, with the coffee shop, which was not a rezon, you know, it was, it was less than that. Um, it was noted that one, by the hearing examiner, that one of the reasons it was okay was because it was not a permanent structure and it could be moved if necessary, if there needed to be traffic changes. So.
I thought that he said that it was because they weren't expecting much traffic with this 25 to 30 customer.
I'm pretty sure it said also that it should be moved because it's not a permanent structure. You know, I, I don't, yeah, it's hard.
No, it's alright.
But anyway, so that, that's just that, you know, so I could probably come up with some more reasons, but, um, those are enough for now.
Does anybody else have any comments on this?
I guess I have a question. You, you mentioned the Offutt Lake community as if it's not rural.
It's a Lambert. I don't think that's the intention of rural zoning. Yeah.
It's a limited area.
More intense rural development.
Yes.
Yes, it has the word rural.
And I would argue that if you're going to build something there in that area, 90% of the people that live in that area live around Offutt Lake. So how can you build something there and not serve those people?
I'm not saying that you wouldn't serve them, but the intention of the rural zoning is to serve the, the rural community that lives and works in that rural area. And I, I think there's, I mean, I don't have it at hand, but I believe there's language that says that the preferences for the, this kind of development, which isn't actually, you know, as kind of discussed in the application, the preferences that it be located within the Lambert itself rather than outside of the Lam.
I, I could, could you put the map back up in any of them really?
Okay.
Um.
Those are a better one.
That, that's fine for my purposes. The Lambert is off the map to the, to the east here, right? But, um, okay, but if I look at where it, it, you know, a sacrifice is gonna be made to more development and some trees are gonna get cut down or something, and where would that happen? I zero in on that triangle because it's there between two roads and a railroad. It's, it's, uh, to me, it's less, uh, obvious to, to try and preserve that spot, those parcels than any of the others, maybe further to the east in the Lammer. That's one of the things that strikes me about this.
I, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I speak in favor of option three personally. I think that the lack of opposition to it plus the idea that we're gonna bring possibly more services to that area, which I don't believe has a lot. So, you know, to make, I can see it making people's lives easier, easier out there and I, I'm all for that. And I guess if there was more opposition.
And I guess if there was more opposition to it, I would be a little bit more on the fence, but everybody seems, of the comments, everybody seems to be in favor of, to the best of my knowledge.
I have not received any comments against it.
And it, and it is on a, like, when a commissioner handsome was, it's on the main road. I, I wouldn't want to put a residential house in there for me personally. Um, so if it's some type of light commercial.
Oh, you know, I might add, um, on Lammards and specifically under the Growth Management Act, the development has to be in place on July first nineteen ninety, and you're supposed to tightline your Lammard boundaries as closely as possible to that existing development. Um, or a logical service area. So expanding a Lammard to increase it for a commercial purpose may not necessarily be in keeping with the Growth Management Act either, but clustering it as we are on this triangle with other neighborhood commercial would probably be in keeping with the intent of the locational criteria in the comprehensive plan. Cause you're still allowing it, you're still locating the new um, neighborhood commercial, neighborhood convenience commercial next to other neighborhood convenience commercial, which is what those locational criteria speak to. Um, it is a little bit further away, and as Commissioner Simmons said, say it's uh, less have a good place for a single family home when you're right next to the railroad tracks there.
It's got those unnatural barriers.
Commissioner Passon.
More questions. I agree with Commissioner Wheatley on most of the items she mentioned. Um, can we go back a few slides?
Yeah.
The one that talked about business priority at the bottom left. That one priority business activity, what is that?
Let me see. Sorry. I've got a lot of papers and I'm trying to remember what things I put. I'm pretty sure that was related to the uses allowed.
So I agree with Commissioner Wheatley. There's been a lot of lack of information from the applicants. We already know that. Um, once we approve this, they can use it for whatever they want, if it's within that designation of commercial. Um, I think the biggest concern here is just the overall process and that this is not, I don't feel in alignment with either comprehensive plan or growth management. Um, and it's just the way to work around it, and I feel like the commentary about the public comments is really not exactly. Um, I mean, maybe you can clarify, you talked about some of the efforts to notify. Um, and I heard those as putting up a sign that Offutt Lake Resort, you know, Hotel and whatnot. Was there in the actual Offutt Lake Lammard, was there notification to the people that live there?
Yes, so one, we, well, I mailed everyone within five hundred feet of both sites, not just um, option one site, but option two, or option three's site as well. Um, I reached out to the hu, one of the homeowner communities of Offutt Lake, and they had a big email chain that they spread out the information to. And then I drove down myself several times, um, and the last time I went down, I took additional little flyers out to the businesses. The businesses that were open and.
Can we move to that map where we had?
The aerial map?
Yeah. So that was, I heard it's five hundred feet, and that seemed to be far before the neighbors.
Um, well, uh, gets the adjacent parcels. I don't recall from memory how large of an area besides, you know, the general number of five hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's actually the code requirement for notification for ladies plan amendments.
That's just asking if all of those people that live in.
Yes, all the people in the, the triangle, are you talking about Offutt Lake?
All of the lake.
I don't believe everyone of them are.
Um, my next comment is about a public comment, which is to say that we, you know, we received two comments here. That's not a lot. Um, so to say all the public comments is a little misleading. And when we say public comment, like, just because the two people who have a say in this particular issue that was raised um, doesn't just uh, include in my mind years worth of people speaking about, let's save our trees, let's save, let's do proper comprehensive planning. And I hear those and still think they're relevant to this uh, particular issue.
I will make a note on the, the trees, they will have the same regulations. It depending on the zone. So if they wanted to redevelop the site right now with the current designation, those uses, they'll have the same tree standards in regards to critical oak habitat as they will if they have neighborhood commercial as their destination.
Good. I'm just saying, all of the applicable areas of concern that the public speaks about, I think are still relevant when they talk about countywide issues. And um, obviously, some of them need to be more specific to the issue at hand, but um, the final point is the, the one that probably people are paying the most attention to is a comment from the EDC, from Michael Kade at the EDC printed on EDC letterhead. And EDC obviously also runs study, and study is hugely influential in that area. But what no one has pointed out is that the applicant is an employee of the EDC. And so, you know, getting a recommendation from your employer is not exactly the same exact thing as public comment, in my opinion. And so, um, I, I'm in support of us following a better comprehensive planning process in the methodology that we do this.
Commissioner Day, did you have anything on this topic?
Yeah, thanks. Real quick. Um, so I think my thinking here is that the neighborhood convenience actually already exists. And um, from the comfort of my home, I was able to check the Google Maps times. Um, and it takes, um, according to Google, um, could be wrong, has led me astray before, but it takes eight minutes to get to this, uh, you know, the current uh, current commercial space here at Offutt Lake, uh, via Offutt Lake Road. Um, it takes ten minutes to get to Spuds via car. So um, the fact that we already have a convenience store there, which is really what this, um, in my mind is intended to do. And then also that we might be drawing, you know, if more development goes in here, we might be drawing development from already developed areas. Or not development, but um, business and traffic. And I'm not sure, I put traffic, kind of traffic. So, and I'm just not sure that um, it really is doing what it's intended to do. And we've, you know, we're not really supposed to think about or consider, you know, this is a certain lady's designation, and anything can go in here that fits that designation. But um, you know, something like a, you know, we've, I've heard art gallery or like little uh, you know boutique stores kind of thrown around. And those really aren't convenience. Um, those, those are something else in my mind. So that, that's really where my thinking is from. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to say on this? I think that we're going to come to no resolution here again.
Well, well, if we can do the, the no rec, a recommendation of no recommendation, and I believe a letter, and we can include.
All the findings.
Totally.
Yeah. Um, but we certainly, if somebody wanted to make a motion, we can certainly entertain it, and uh, if it passes, it passes, and if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Well, I would not make a motion, but a recommendation yet. We just do a show of hands on each option.
You want to thumbnail it just to get a feel for the room?
Yeah, if we, if we find out we've got something, then we can make a motion and move forward.
Okay, on option, on option one, that was being obtained. How many people here would support that one? Commissioner Day, were you a option one, no change supporter?
I think I'm no change right though.
On option two, which is just the north and south parcels, anybody like that one? Okay. And on three words, uh, all three parcels, who likes those?
Two, two parcels. Option two is one parcel, option three is two parcels.
I thought option one was no change, option two was the north and south, and option three was all three.
Yeah, I'll make it. So there's option two, it's just that one parcel, the applicant.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
That makes sense. So you like option three. I like option three. You guys like option two, and you folks like option one. So we're, we're getting nowhere with this. But for formality's sake, if anybody would like to make a motion and watch it fail, we can do that.
I already did that.
So let's.
I, I'd like to hear what the idea of recommending no recommendation. What does that involve?
Um, so the planning commission has three options, generally speaking, when you're sending items before the board, to the board of county commissioners. You can do it the recommendation of approval, a recommendation of denial, or forwarding it to the board of county commissioners without a recommendation. So these are the three main options there, aside from minority report and other things, but this is the three main planning mission options. So the planning commission could tonight, because you can't come to interview me because of the number of members we have and the vote that you have, forwarded to the board of county commissioners with no recommendation. Um, showing, of course, what vote you did take during the meeting. So in this case, it would be the number of commissioners that for it, and never commissioned is voted against it. Um, and you would have a four-three vote for tonight out of eight total members. So we have exactly half of the planning commission voting for it, but not that majority. So. And, and what we want to include is some of our findings.
Yep, absolutely. You can include findings for that decision as to why you came to no recommendation. It could be findings from both sides.
We have to take a vote, do, do I hear we have to take a vote in order to do that?
Somebody moved to take a vote of?
Technically, we've already taken two votes.
They've taken two votes on it, so.
We had a vote for option one and a vote for option three that both failed.
Yeah, last time. So we need to have a vote to approve forwarding no recommendation. So you want to forward it out of client's mission with no recommended for approval or denial? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I, I've, I totally agree. I don't think we're ever going to come to a resolution.
I think we're pretty split on this one. With that, we'll call for the vote for forwarding no recommendation.
Mr. Nelson?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Mr. B?
May.
Mr. Nelson?
Hi.
Mr. Passon? Vice Chair Day?
Hi.
All right, that motion passes five-two. So with that, we should discuss what findings we want to include for the board of county commissioners. Um, did, are you formalized on paper?
Formalized?
Did you?
Well, that sounds scary. I've been formalized.
Well, I'm just, um.
I have some notes.
Are you, are, I guess I should have said, are your notes fairly formalized, that they could be incorporated similar to like a minority report?
Probably, yeah. You can look at them and decide.
Well, I mean, just to make sure that, if, if you can give them to Amelia, so she can roll those in, I think that would be efficient, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, maybe I'll, um, I'll share them with Commissioner Passon your first.
Is that okay? Um, yeah, well, what the, probably want the whole planning commission to vote on the findings together. So if you want to get together, send them to Amelia, she can bring them back at the next meeting for you to look at them one more time before you actually pass it on to the board, and you've got the bio, finding commission on that. If we're going to do it that way, that's what I would recommend. Does anybody else want to forward any findings? Or discuss any findings now that Amelia would put in that she can then bring back for a vote?
What time?
I mean, the only one I can think on the top of my head is for me, the biggest reason I'm not supporting option three is because I feel it falls far outside of what's recommended for a size, a parcel size.
The one acre.
Yeah.
Too far beyond one acre.
I think if the comp plan says it should be an acre less, then we have some room to move. But saying that, then going to three and a half acres is a, I mean, that's a pretty sizable jump.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, I guess my, my thoughts on it are that I feel like the area is acting as neighborhood commercial already to a large portion, so just giving it um, formal designation would just be for the best, but we can get those all in, and Amelia can bring those back, so that way we can uh, have our last hammering on it and vote on it. That would be great.
Yeah, so we voted to do a recommendation of no recommendation. And then in two weeks, so hopefully by Friday, I can get those findings from the commissioners. Yeah, just a, a point of clarification for me, is the Chevron station, is that currently zoned as commercial?
Neighborhood, neighborhood commercial.
Yeah, so I, because what you just said made me think that you, you might be assuming that it's not. But that, that parse, that one parcel.
I know, the southern parcel already is.
Is neighborhood commercial.
Yeah.
And the other one was brought in under the other um.
With special use.
Especially.
Um, and I would ask that if you could send all of those things you're going to want to talk, you want to bring back to the planning commission to Tasha, Tasha will forward them to Amelia, just so we have good record keeping on those. So everybody sends them to Tasha, and Amelia will consolidate everything and bring it back to the commission. Fair. That sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay, absolutely. Anybody else have any questions or comments on this particular topic? All right, thank you, Amelia. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is work session number four on long-term agricultural zoning update with Ashley.
Yeah, hi, I'm gonna put it out there, Maya has a, a very sick child, so she might be coming, going in, going out, and you could just be gracious with her, she's trying to juggle that. They were in urgent care earlier today. And so I think she's out right now. Tasha, do you mind bringing that up? And I'm going to pretend to be Maya and be myself. Um, and so I might wait for her to jump on if there's a question that falls more on her port. Um, but good evening, we are at work session number four. Congratulations, you digested a lot of information. Um, so at our last meeting, we did full work hearing, um, and a follow-up work session. And so this meeting is to discuss the options moving forward based on everything that's heard. Um, so today's work session, we can move to slide two, please. Um, we're going to summarize the major decision points for the plan permission, go over changes made to the comp plan based on comments that we've received. Um, have a further discussion about some of the options moving forward, specifically around COZIT, who designation of mineral lands and agriculture, um, as well as the refined soils list. We're going to save, save the big, big one for last. Um, and then towards the end, we're going to show a map series that we developed based on both the combination of public comment and that refined soils list. Hello. And you are, sorry. Um, so the summary. Thank you. Sorry. It's a really small presentation, so I'm just trying to line it up and see behind me at the same time. Um, so the big decision points that we're hoping to chat about tonight um, are that cluster requirement. It's sort of like a rewind to when we talked about this during work session one and two, sort of figuring out what to do with that clustered requirement, whether we keep it as part of this package or potentially delay it for the content update. Um, also looking at that co-designation piece with mineral lands, and so we have a few options for how to move forward on that. Um, and then a recommendation on that kind of code changes, um, specifically to the long-term agriculture or development standards that exist today. And so those would impact folks that are already zoned long-term ag as well as future potential properties in that. So then, as we look specifically just at the designation criteria for long-term ag, some of the decision points that we hope to start narrowing down are whether we look at using this refined soils list. Um, and if we do go down that route, or if the planning commission decides to go that route, um, what would the cutoff be? How, how would you choose to use that list? Um, whether to include farmlands of statewide importance, um, if you recall, that was a change that was made to state law, it was brought up in public comment. And there's really a choice that the planning commission um, has now on whether we look at it now or delay it to periodic review. We also did um, a preliminary analysis of the soils and can give you some information on them. Um, and then getting down to just sort of the basics that have been around from the beginning with all the scenarios, what percent of a parcel must be lime soils? So that's at seventy-five percent, fifty percent, or other. Um, what should the predominant parcel size be? The two options that are currently on the table are that twenty acres or fifteen acres to be included. And then that block size requirement are sort of those agricultural blocks of land. And so currently we're at two hundred to three hundred and twenty acres, but we also have options that are at that hundred acre or forty acre. Okay, so with the comp plan changes, um, who had a chance to take a look at them with the markup? I'll try to keep keep it brief. Okay, I'll just, I'll walk through them, and if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. Keep it brief. Okay, I'll just, I'll walk through them and if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. Um, so. Did I switch? Sorry, I need to find where the notes are for that one. I apologize. Um, okay, I'm just going to go off of that instead of kind of. Um, so the comp plan changes were really specific to feedback that we got, um, mostly in writing, and they're just like small refinements, um, that were made. But there was a policy headed around residential density of agriculture resource zones, deleting a reference to parcel size. Adding, this is actually a fairly substantive one, adding an opt-in policy for continuous parcels, um, which was brought up in comment. Adding language about the limited ability of nearby owners to turn our addresses. And then clarifying that due vegetation specifically around site requests should be deferred until comprehensive countywide analysis. So a lot of them are just cleanup cases, probably with the exception of the opt-in one. And then for consideration, um, is that requirement, whether we choose to delay it for the periodic update or consider recommending it this time. Some of the benefits of delaying, um, and this, this has been brought up actually by the planning commission. Um, an interest in looking at density bonuses and how they might fit into this bigger picture of housing here in the county. If we delay this cluster requirement, um, there's an opportunity to sort of bring in other considerations. Um, especially with all the new housing requirements at the state level and do it. Do it in a more inclusive way than just sort of these minor changes at this time.
Can I ask you to clarify a bit about the cluster requirement because, um. You know, when I was kind of reading about different approaches, you know, there's a, there's a kind of a, an opposite end of the spectrum approach where if you have like wildlife corridors or something that you want to preserve that. I forget what it's called, but you can do sort of the opposite of cluster. Like block. Something like, so, so if it's a, if it's a cluster requirement, does that mean that there's a certain density? Of housing that's required, or is it referring more to the fact that any residential development would be on the non? Prime. Part of the.
It's more the the latter. It's essentially saying that there is going to be a requirement to preserve a certain amount of. The land in question in an agricultural resource parcel. Um, so you know, the counties had planned rural residential developments, we should turn it to cluster on the books for a really long time. Um, this would essentially be saying that for parcels that have at least fifty percent, uh, or more prime farm land soils that are at least twenty acres in size. That they would be required to do a cluster development rather than a conventional development. So the density doesn't change, it's how you arrange those houses. And the fact that you, those landowners would be required to set aside at agriculture resource parcel. What we heard during public feedback was that without. Density bonuses, which went away and. Pass, pass appeals, um, it's difficult to get them to pencil or, um, that there aren't a lot of incentives there. Um, but with all the new housing requirements, um, there's definitely, you know, I think there's more of an open conversation to be had to reevaluate whether. We could include density bonuses or other incentives, um, for those kind of clustering.
Ha- has there been any discussion of, you know, as I mentioned, kind of the alternative of, you know, having. You know, like, I don't know, I think of like Sierra Ranch in California or something like something that is more about. Uh, encouraging integration with. Natural elements in the residential portion.
I think for potentially conservation of a different type of resource, I think for agriculture, you think of larger, larger blocks as being. More functional for, uh, you know, a continuing ag use. But I think there could be written in flexibility for other, other conservation purposes like wildlife habitats and corridors and things like that. There's actually a lot of flexibility even in the current, um, development standards, but this is really focused on. You know, clustering around that conservation of agricultural resource parcels. So any, any strong feelings? And we're kind of modeling this after Grand Mound that we sort of start making some of the smaller decisions. Um, and sort of bringing them all back for a final vote at the end, but we can track them along the way. Any strong feelings? One way or another for whether we.
Do we want to hit them one at a time off your list to see what people think?
Um, oh, it would.
Well, I mean, I guess we can start with co designation of mineral ag land. Does anybody have strong feelings on this?
Oh, sorry. We, we went back a slide if that's okay, the cluster requirement is the first one.
Yeah, maybe it would be easier for my brain at least if we could sort of stick to one.
Okay.
Yeah. We can just stay on cluster, and if you don't feel strongly, we can hold off. We were just thinking that as we start moving through these, it would be nice to make some. Make some small decisions.
Do you want to start with?
Well, I mean, I guess I would vote for postponing the discussion of. Making a, well, what, what exactly is the decision about clustering that we'd be? Uh, supporting or not supporting?
Oh, so as currently proposed, it would be a requirement.
Just to require that there be clustering on the.
Parcels that meet.
But not.
Specific requirements.
But not the nature of what clustering means more broadly.
No.
Okay.
No, it's really just taking the existing development standards for cluster developments, um, making some small changes so that they work. For agricultural resource clusters essentially. Um, so I think the comp plan update would provide an opportunity for a broader conversation about clusters and how they can be used and the incentives that could be. Integrated into them. But we brought it to you all because it was an idea from the stakeholder work group. Lockham County does use this as a tool to protect additional agricultural land. So I think it is a tool in the toolbox, even if, if you delay it, um, it's, it's still a tool in the toolbox that should be considered by the planning commission for agricultural preservation.
Go ahead. I'm just going to say if, if we decide one way or the other on the cluster requirement or not. It comes back up in the comp plan? Are we going to be redoing it again?
It'd be under housing, I think, but we, we've committed to look at density bonuses, both based on all the feedback we've heard through this process, feedback from the planning commission. And it makes sense in the context of the periodic review.
So I'm, I'm kind of liking the idea of thinking about clustering more holistically and not just in. This particular portion of it and doing it all together in comp plan review instead of just one little piecemeal here and then coming back and rethinking everything. But I'm open to other people's opinions on it.
Well, maybe if you could state just really clearly. So, so if there's not clustering, that means there'd be sort of the traditional subdividing. To. What? I mean, what, what's the alternative?
These are zone R, R, one, five, and so the, the, uh, the other option on the table is that an individual property owner could come in and do a conventional subdivision.
Yeah.
So if they have twenty acres, they could do four or five acre lots.
So, yeah, I just want to be clear about the, the two choices there. So, yeah, so. Given, given that I support, um. Going with clustering and then coming back to refine it, uh, with the comp plan review, but recommending clustering as part of this process.
Mr. Nelson, do you have any opinions on this one?
Um, yeah, just because I don't like the requirement. I don't like the cluster in this. I mean, I. Ideally, you do a cluster and you give people enough density in their clustering that they want to do it. Um, and there's one thing I've always said. You know, if you take a section, a square, whatever size square you want to take, you know, if it's a hundred acres. And you divide it into five separate pieces that are all the same size. That pretty, I mean, as far as me personally, I have no interest in farming that. Because it's too many people to deal with. They've probably not developed it in. A way that's conducive to me actually being able to get things done in a timely manner. Which is why I like clustering, because if you take, like I've always said, so if you take a hundred acres that's zone one to twenty, and you put five houses scattered all over it. Versus if you take that same hundred acres and maybe put seven or eight houses. On a corner ten or fifteen. Then you've got that area, but I don't look. I mean, I don't like the idea of requiring people to cluster. And I think that. If we say. You know, let's do this and you can have, you know, whatever it comes up to, which I think should be a discussion for. The actual comp plan update. I, I mean, I would. I'm very much in favor of allowing people to cluster. Just don't know if I'm in favor of requiring it.
Hey, do I hear you say that you're in favor of incentivizing it?
Yes, yeah.
Commissioner Pressinger?
Following on to Commissioner Nelson's comments, uh. To me, it sounds like he's actually recommending an alternative to clustering, which would be something encouraging, broad, open areas being made, kept consistent. Is that something that can be made as a recommendation?
Not sure. I, he, he described clustering pretty, yeah, it was.
In a specific country.
It, the, so the, the way it's currently written, um, follows along with what Commissioner Nelson described in terms of the development standards for a cluster.
Yeah, it's just that, so. When I started this, Thurston County had, uh, cluster density bonus. And they did some developments and some people got upset, and I believe somebody challenged it to the hearings board. And the county commissioners, instead of saying, let's take a look at this and see how we can do it better, just said, well, it's just quick. So they completely did away. And I mean, I can point you. I don't know if I'd say really good projects that worked, but. Good projects that had potential. Actually. They're both by the same person. One. County staff wanted to dictate the number of animals that this person could have on their property. And it was a ridiculously low number. And the other one, I believe. He went and. Really not farming ground before, but it's a horse area, so, but it's still open space.
And in the, the difference with what's before you is that it is specifically called out as an agricultural. Cluster, um, to keep things simple, whereas what's currently there, it could be open space, it could be for wildlife, it could be for critical area. Conservation, but this would specifically be for agriculture. Um, and so do, do we have five thumbs in either direction on whether we? Tie this into the comp plan update or whether we keep it as part of this proposal? And if we don't, that's okay. I'm just trying to gauge if we've.
I.
From a few of you.
I'm with Commissioner Nelson that if we can incentivize clustering in these ag lands, instead of requiring it, doing it now is fine, but if we can't, I would rather take more time. To find incentives for all of our clustering in all of our areas and do that in the comp plan.
I will say from just like a pure staff research standpoint, there have been some concerns raised specifically with water. Um, in clusters that it would be nice to dig into further, um, because apparently you get a lot more, um. There's a lot more room for innovation. If you can do a community water system, you can only do that if you have water rights, but then you're competing with the ag use. And so being able to sort of figure out if there are any other creative ways to go to smaller lots and preserve more farmland. Um, it's sort of on the list for the comp plan update.
Ashley, correct my wrong, but typically depth, density bonus beyond one to five aren't necessarily allowed in our GMA because they call for rural character, want to protect rural character. But in this instance, we're saying that density bonuses are great because we're actually trying to further a goal of the growth span and act by encouraging agricultural and preserving agricultural lands, correct?
That's what the hope is, um, but just having the time and space to dig into case law. To make sure that it's not going to be challenged.
Yeah, because there has been some case law in general of allowing, um, incentives to go to a dens, higher density than the one to five. Um, our current cluster ordinance or cluster regulations keep the overall density over the hundred acre possible cluster dipped one to five over the overhaul overall. But you can have a smaller density, of course, in the cluster itself. This one would allow a density bonus to allow them more units to preserve that ag land, which is a good thing.
Well, yeah, currently it doesn't. It doesn't have the habit, but that would be the goal.
Right, so the planning commission wanted to, um, advocate for an incentive for someone to, um, cluster to preserve ag land, that could be an opportunity right now.
It, it could be an opportunity, it's part of the comp plan update. So.
Well, so just to be clear, so if we were to vote yes this evening, I mean, we're, we're sort of voting on the yes on the general idea, and it sounds like. Further refinements would be coming down the road that, that, that we think this is the best way to approach long term agriculture land, basically.
It, I mean, it could be, there is also been, there's been a lot of public comments about how the long term ag zone isn't, isn't the right. Agriculture zone for the kind of farming we have, and so I think there's going to be a lot of continued discussion about. Protecting farmland with lots of different tools, like this is, long term ag zoning is the tool that the state has developed, but there are plenty of other zoning tools that other communities use. Um, and plus this cluster is one of them, um, but there are that plus others, so.
But this is specifically related to LTA, to land that's designated LTA?
Nope, this is, no, this is our, our, our one, five. That is, like, so if LT is only applied to properties that are seventy-five percent or greater prime farmland soils. This requirement to clustering is on rural resource residential parcels that only have fifty percent prime farmland soils. So it was a way to sort of extend, extend protections from, uh, farmland. Um, while still preserving some of those underlying development rights. It only affects, I think, fourteen hundred acres. It wasn't as, I don't think the number was as big as what the stakeholder work group. Um, had expected. It's a much bigger number in Lockham County. It's like thirty-four thousand acres. So I'm just giving you some context and background info. I know we've covered so many things, and so I apologize if.
Mr. Nelson, do you have something on that?
Well, if. I was, I was thinking that this was specifically related to the LTA, so if this is beyond that, I, I think I'm with you that taking a holistic approach and. And doing it with the comp plan update makes more sense to me.
Is that, I don't, Commissioner Pressinger, Commissioner Day, um.
Commissioner Day, do you, do you want to tackle this now or comp plan?
I, I'd agree that plan is probably the better. If you're going to do for some incentive, you need to work cross definitions.
I didn't understand a word of that.
I'm gonna say.
Plan.
Comp plan.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Nelson, are you in comp plan stage?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so.
Okay, let's, let's tackle that. Comp plan.
Okay, that sounds great.
I guess just one question. Is it affecting anybody now? If we don't do anything?
No, it would be extending requirements. Um, to new property owners, which were notified, um, which is make sure that they were notified, just, just like any of the other properties that would potentially be affected. So it sounds like more to come and a bigger conversation.
That sounds good.
Okay. I am, I'm going to try to cover co designation of mineral and ag, um, and this is going to be interesting because. Maya was very engaged in this project, as I think some of you on the planning commission. Oh, is Maya on?
Hi, Ashley. My ears must have been burning. I'm so sorry. I've missed some of this presentation. I have a one year old that's got a very high fever tonight, so I'm, I just popped in and I'm happy to talk about co designation. Um, so talking about co designation mineral resources and agriculture, our current comprehensive plan does allow for co designation of the two. And that was a change that was made fairly recently in two thousand and twenty, and that was after extensive review by the planning commission. And also by a stakeholder work group. So previously to the two thousand and twenty update, the county did not allow for co designation of mineral resources and agriculture. And the reason for that, there's a little bit of history there, but the way we used to designate mineral lands was just the existing mines that had a permit in. And that is where we designated the mineral resource lands. Uh, but in two thousand and twenty, that really shift and the county did a countywide update and that was based on the underlying resource, so the gravel and the. So the gravel and the rock that was mapped and, uh. From there, uh, we went from mapping only existing mines to mapping the resource. Across the county on a county-wide scale. And so in two thousand and twenty, after a lot of review, almost four years of review and several public hearings and lots of stakeholder work. The planning commission recommended and the board, uh, took a final action to reverse the co-designation position. And co-designation of mineral resources and agriculture, uh, was put in the comp plan. So I'll go through a short summary of that process and a little bit of our options moving forward with that. So just to go over the process at a high level, um, staying on the slide for the time being. We started that process for mineral resource lands update in two thousand and sixteen. And, uh, both of the options for having co-designation and not allowing for code designation were presented in the options. And that, that mineral resource lands update started with a consultant to do kind of a, and a map of all of the resources. Uh, gravel and rock in Thurston County. And that consultant developed that map and that served as the inventory, which was the basis for the mineral resource. Lands designation. And then like agriculture, we use soils kind of as the basis. Uh, several land use criteria are applied on top of that, which. Pick and pull other pieces out of that designation. So mineral resource lands is similar to ag, except it's an overlay. It doesn't change the underlying zoning. So you can have mineral resource lands designated on long-term ag or on rural resource residential one to five. Or on even, um, some parkland has mineral resources. Long-term forestry has a lot of mineral resources in Thurston County. And so all of these lands can overlap, uh. And it doesn't impact that underlying zoning. After we had a consultant develop that, we had twelve stakeholder meetings. That group was made up of a variety of different individuals. Initially, it was a pretty large group. We had close to twenty people attend those meetings. Involved several different mining operators. There were land trusts involved. We had environmental representatives, uh, from Sierra Club, League of Women Voters, Black Hills Audubon Society. We had city representatives, uh, some folks from DNR attended those meetings initially. And then there was also internal review with development services and water resources to look at our code language and how we're applying mineral resources. In terms of permitting. And the planning commission's review of this was fourteen meetings specifically on mineral lands. So this was part of our last periodic update, but we held fourteen meetings alone on this with the planning commission. And two separate public hearings with the planning commission. And at both of those public hearings, the planning commission recommended co-designation of mineral resources and agriculture. And beyond the planning commission's review, the board held thirteen public meetings, uh, to review mineral lands alone. And one public hearing on that as well.
I might add, the, the county had actually been discussing mining and mineral lands for about ten to fifteen years. That culminated in that decision in two thousand and twenty also, so we revisited this many times.
Yes, it was not a new conversation and a lot of the folks at the table had been working on this for over a decade already. Um, so just a quick glance at state law, state law is pretty clear on co-designation. And how jurisdictions are supposed to approach that. And so jurisdictions must co-designate resource lands. That's mineral resource lands, agriculture, forestry, unless we determine the two resource uses are incompatible. And if that's the case, the land with the greatest long-term commercial significance is supposed to be assigned. So that's, that's a key piece to remember when I talk about this and the conversations with the stakeholders. Is that both of these resource designations protect the underlying land and the resource. Not necessarily requiring a use to occur on that property, property. So you can have land that's protected for mineral resources and for agriculture that is not used for either. Or it could be used for both down the road. And that was a common thread that came up in the stakeholder group over and over and over again. And some other things that came out of that process, we, uh, community planning did a high-level literature review. And we did find that there are cases where mines can be reclaimed for agriculture use afterwards. Particularly for cropland, for hay, also for forestry and agriculture, um, general pasture lands. And it showed both coal and gravel mines. In Thurston County, we mostly have gravel mines, but, uh, both types of mines can be reclaimed for agricultural uses. But the one thing that was, uh, persistent in all of those studies is that the reclamation process is super important. In order for land to be successfully reclaimed reclaimed for agricultural uses. So a mining operator really from the start has to have a reclamation plan that. Gets at preserving that land for agricultural uses after the fact. And there are best management practices that go into that. Topsoil is generally conserved on site and there are special. Um, tools that they use to protect the soil characteristics and make sure that that soil can be restored properly. Um, so going into a little bit of the stakeholder group work, so I mentioned there were, uh, several meetings with a stakeholder group. And towards the end of the process in early two thousand and twenty, we reconvened a subset of that stakeholder group. At the direction of the planning commission to iron out a few issues that the different parties didn't really agree on. There were kind of two sides and co-designation of agriculture was one of those sides. So community planning worked with a subset of the original stakeholder group. There were. Two mining operators, a water representative, Black Hills Audubon Society. And, uh, the Community Farmland Trust on that group. And in terms of co-designation of agriculture, they really worked through some of the issues. And, uh, what they found that at that time, the designation that we were considering for mineral resource lands. Was mostly on the edges of our long-term agriculture. And so some of the policies that you see in the comprehensive plan today speak to that. In terms of only allowing certain types of accessory uses on the edges of long-term agricultural parcels. There were comments made about the importance of maintaining contiguous blocks of agriculture and to make sure that they're not broken up. And then, um. Language suggested about limiting accessory uses to the perimeter. And also about requiring operators to identify soil characteristics before they go into their mining operations. So that they can properly reclaim if they are co-designated. So that language currently exists in the comprehensive plan, in the policies and also in the Thurston County Code in seventeen twenty. And that was the result of a lot of really hard work from, um, some mineral operators, Community Farmland Trust. And other environmental representatives that were on that subcommittee. And so we'll go ahead to the next slide. So looking forward and what this means for the planning commission's consideration of all of this. Uh, staff is not recommending that the planning commission reopen co-designation at this time. There was so much work involved with that initially. And, uh, it's really just not part of the scope of this project. We don't have stakeholder work group set up for all of that kind of conversation. But with that said, and hearing the public comments that were received at the hearing, uh, two weeks ago, we do have some. Suggestions on potential changes to the comp plan language and the policies within the comp plan. Uh, there were some valid concerns brought up by some of the mining operators. So the first concern that we heard from some of the mining operators is that, uh, their existing mines don't have prime farmland soils. They're technically classified as gravel pits. And so they should be excluded from the long-term agriculture maps. And so one option for the planning commission is to consider having a policy in the comp plan that excludes. Current existing mines from the long-term agriculture designation. On the basis of that comment from USDA NRCS that these are classified as gravel pits. And part of the reasoning behind this is we're applying this ag zoning now. And these mines have already existed, some of them for thirty, forty years, even longer, um, in some cases. They did not develop a reclamation plan with agriculture in mind. They developed that reclamation plan based on their current zoning. That is on the land or probably whatever applied when they were initially doing the mining operation permits. So to rezone for agriculture now and say that. That should be the use after they're done mining. It's just not going to sync up. They haven't done the best management practices to get there. So that is one option for the planning commission to consider. I will say that in a new map series, we're going to go over later tonight. Most of those existing mining operations have already been removed from the refined soils analysis. I think there's maybe one existing mine in option Z, but we can certainly look at it closer. And then the second consideration for the planning commission tonight is to revise policy language that limits accessory uses on agricultural lands. So as I mentioned initially, when we worked with the, uh, stakeholder work group subcommittee on this. Most of the mineral lands were on the perimeter of existing long-term agriculture blocks. And if we do a widespread rezone of new agricultural lands, that changes the game a little bit. There might be quite a bit more overlap. And so we can make some pretty simple policy changes since these accessory uses are fairly customary to. Uh, mining operations, we can make some changes to prefer that they're sited on non-prime soils. And in the event that they can't be sited on non-prime soils, to, uh, reduce footprint where possible. So it doesn't prohibit it, it just, uh, adds in some language to minimize the impact on agriculture. The other consideration here is after a mining operation ceases, those accessory uses will typically go away. And so it's not necessarily a long-term impact to the underlying soils. Provided that there are best management practices in place. And so that's the gist of co-designation, but I will stop and check in with the planning commission on questions. And if there's any direction from the planning commission on the two considerations before them for co-designation tonight.
Thank you, Maya. Uh, you earlier mentioned if there are competing uses between mineral and ag, that there's a. Evaluation of long-term economic value. Can you say what the definition of long-term is it? Twenty years, fifty years, seven generations longer?
Yeah, uh, GMA looks twenty to fifty years out, and so that is kind of the long-term economic value range. I will say we did not do a formal economic impact analysis when we went through this process from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty.
Anybody else have any questions for Maya before we get into these options? Well, why don't we just hit these options then in that the first one being, um. Whether or not we're going to exclude existing mines. Can we go back once? Oh, there it is. To exclude the existing operating mines from the soils. LTA, does anybody have any heartburn on that one? Or any questions or comments on that one? How about a?
I mean, soils aren't there.
Yeah.
Gone, somewhere else.
This one seems pretty easy to me, but do we have consensus to, to go ahead and exclude those? Thumbs up.
I'm sorry, just a question.
And we exclude current operating mines from this designation.
So you're saying it's gone, but the question, the only reason it would be included is if it actually had prime. Well, if it was on the prime map. Which, which could mean that there was prime soils there at one point and then they ripped off the top soil, started mining gravel. I see. And it still stays on that map for some reason.
Yeah, they, they were included in this scenario because. They're part of the soil survey.
And the soil survey does have map units that date back to the seventy-sixties and even earlier, so, um. Exactly what the commissioner is saying, the soils may have pre-existed the mining operation. And then they're removed and they're no longer there, but that soil survey does not necessarily get updated with each land use change.
Yep, it does not.
Yes, I have some heartburn, but I can look. I think you're looking at a situation, I mean, I, I have seen through, um. The work of like the Savery Institute and others, examples of where mines in California and Nevada that were developed with no, no forethought of reclaiming them. Have been reclaimed through, you know, innovative use of animal impact and other things. And so I just think it creates an opportunity for innovation. If somebody looks at this, um, old. You know, reclaimed mine that's put back to some use that's not agricultural use, but it's, um, it's, you know, no longer. Uh, a gravel mine, but it's not considered long-term ag and there was no, no, uh. Need to, uh, no requirement to put back soils. The value is going to be low and there's an opportunity for somebody that wants to take a shot at it to come in and innovate and do something and restore it.
A conservation district did that. They, they took over Spokane.
In Spokane. I just visited it.
Yeah.
So I guess we get back to the question, can we exclude gravel pits?
Existing.
Existing gravel pits.
I'm good with that.
Commissioner Day, do you have an opinion on this?
Let's exclude them.
We, we have five to exclude gravel pits. Existing.
Existing, existing gravel pits.
Yeah.
Maya, did, did you want a feedback on the other policy for?
Yeah, yeah, if the, um, planning commission, uh, has a recommendation on the other policy. This is something that, uh, as a staff person who worked on the mineral lands update. The changes make sense to remove any sort of prohibitive language on accessory uses. Those are typically customary to mining operations. And so, um, I, I think the language that we have presented here. Works towards both protecting the prime farmland soils where we can, while still allowing accessory uses. When possible for those new mining operations that we may see in the future.
Any discussion on that point?
It doesn't sound good.
Um, well, I guess I'm not so much look, I guess I'm looking at the bold language up top. And I do have some concern because when we originally did this. By. Trying to keep stuff off of prime farmland, we were trying to keep it off of what I would consider actual good soil. Which I don't think a lot of gravel pits are going to do anything anyways, because. If you try to dig there, you're just going to find dirt, not wrong. And if you try to drive there, when it's wet, you're going to get stuck. Um, but now, based on, depending on what option we go with moving to the board. And we haven't seen the. Maps that, of the revised areas. But I would argue that I've seen. Based on the original maps, I've seen entire gravel pits without. What I would consider any quality farmland included in this update. And to me, we can't tell them, oh, well, you have to keep all your mining off of your prime farmland. Because their prime farmland is gravel. So.
Do you have any feelings on that one, Commissioner Passinger?
I, I don't agree. I think it's problematic.
Well. I don't know if we're going to come to a conclusion on that particular point. Go ahead, Commissioner, really.
Is this one of those areas where it would actually be nice to get further public comment? I mean, to what?
And more data. How many are we talking about?
How, how many?
This is twenty acres, two thousand acres, how much?
I guess we don't know. Do, Maya, do we know how, how much, uh, land this would actually affect?
We, we don't know how much land that would affect. It depends on which options, which maps move forward. Basically from the planning commission, but this, this policy is not just speaking to existing mining operations. It's any new or expanding mining operation that comes into the county for a permit in the future. So, um, it, it would depend, each map would have a different level of overlap with mineral lands designation. And that's potentially a number I can work with our GIS analyst to pull.
I guess I would like to say, having not been part of twenty-plus working sessions or hundreds of hours of discussion of this, that. Just at the most basic level, I do not understand this code designation, uh. Mining is by its nature extractive and often highly pollutants at the minimum. Agriculture is about sustainability and building soil and, uh. Doing everything possible to retain and long-term utilize, whether it's for forestry, whether it's for.
crops, whether it's for grazing, whether it's for any of those things. And I just, neither at odds with each other in a significant way, so it's my big concern.
Is it okay if we table this one and, and talk about the soils? Cause I think some of this plays into the soil list.
Yeah, yeah, let's move on to the next.
Is that, is that okay, Maya? Okay, are we all ready to all ready to learn how to use the soil survey? Cause it's been a really exciting month for me. I know digging into it and cross referencing stuff. We have been hearing from the start from our stakeholder work room that the new soils listed in that prime farmland soils list are not necessarily the best soils for crop production, pasture, hay, and whatnot. I, I can speak for myself only, but I didn't really understand how to use the soil survey going beyond just the list of prime farmland soils. We had gotten feedback from NRCS when we had asked, like, what does it mean if it's prime if irrigated? What does it mean if it's prime if drained? And the responses are, you know, they're soil scientists. They say, well, it is prime if you have water. It is prime if you drain those wetlands or protect that parcel from flooding. State law does allow counties to use the soil survey in a more refined nature. There's something in it called the land capability classification system. That is a mouthful. But what that essentially is, is a way to classify your soils. So going beyond the prime farmland soils, every soil listed will then be ranked in one of these eight classes. And if there is a limitation or a hazard associated with that classification, it will have a subclass. And so as we started digging into that prime farmland soils list, when you start talking about a prime farmland soil, it's only prime if irrigated, it's most likely a class four with a soil limitation of stoniness prone to drought. And so a lot of that, like, I can't till it. It's got too many rocks in it. Afterwards, I asked those folks, do you have the spanaway or the spanawayness quality? Cause there's the four S's. That's probably what you got. It's like, oh yeah, that's what I got. Now, the prime have drained, a lot of those new soils, they're gonna be your class four and they're gonna be the W, water in or on the soil. And so as you move through the different classes, I hope it's okay that I'm standing and pointing. These four are generally identified as being capable for agricultural production. But as you move down, when you get to the class four, it's, it's gonna come with the most limitations. And all of this language, I just wanna be clear, I'm, I really tried hard not to be subjective at all. This is the language that the soil survey uses. So for class four, they use very severe limitations and or very careful management for those soils to be capable of agricultural production. Yeah.
Just real quick, I don't wanna interrupt your flow, but do you know if class four soils in Thurston County are currently being used for agricultural production?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have probably farms occurring on a lot of these classes. We actually have a lot of these classes currently represented, especially the, sorry, represented in the 1990 soil survey. Most of them, as I dug into it, are ones that were historically drained. And so there are a lot of the W's, so like, you can, class one will never have a subclass. Once you get down two and below, almost all of them will have a subclass. A lot of the lands that are currently identified as prime in the 1990 soil survey are class two, three, and they're ones that already were drained or were protected from flooding. The big difference with the new soils that are on the prime farmland soils list is that they are not currently drained. They are ones that are only prime if drained. And so, you know, if the acreage that's included or was included in the first series of maps, if they were a four W or worse, they most likely have wetlands on them. And as we heard from folks who commented, a lot of those wetlands are now Oregon spotted hog habitat or habitat for other, other species. Any questions about just sort of like how this classification system works before we kind of move into what it means for the Thurston County soils? We can go back to it if we need to. Okay.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
I don't know a lot about soils, but the little I know has talked about Western Washington soils being from the hundreds of millions of years of its location, being very washed out of depleted of minerals. And as an example of that, Eastern Washington is significantly better in that regard. And I've heard stories that cattle grazers or horse razors here will often spend double the money to ship hay from Eastern Washington out here than to buy it from here because it has a higher nutrient content. Is there any consideration for any of this designation of prime?
Commissioner Nelson will definitely be able to speak to that more than me, but what I would say is that the very, when I was reading through the soil survey and all I know is like verbatim from the soil survey, it is not like hands in the dirt. That's where Commissioner Nelson's gonna have to jump in. But the very severe limitations and or very careful management, very careful management is essentially nutrient additions or water additions, or, you know, you're the reason that, let's say, our prairies, which have been carefully managed for a long time, only crops has changed from camis to livestock grazing. That careful management is nutrient additions. And the NRCS folks were chatting with me about that. So cattle grazers can be successful on forest soils because they're running cattle on them and those cattle are then providing nutrients to that, that soil. And if you are able to add water, if you're fortunate enough to have water rights, they could be even more productive. But a lot of folks don't have.
And I'll just say, as far as people buying feed, a lot of people that supplement like to use alfalfa. And it's because of our weather here, it doesn't grow as well. And so, yes, it doesn't, I mean, I've done, I've worked on a dairy once where he tested all the time, did everything. And we made really good, high-quality feed. But that was a guy that went out, cut his hay, as soon as all the grass was off, spread manure on the field, as soon as he's done spreading manure, pumped water, basically right up until he was ready to cut again. And so, yes, he had extremely high-quality hay. You can make good hay, but again, it's, I would say it's more of a climate issue here. Because like, I, I can use my personal property. When guys in Eastern Washington are making hay, I can't make hay because the ground is so wet that I can't get the hay dry enough. And it'll, you know, if I had two weeks of really nice weather, maybe I could. But we don't typically get that until later in the season. Which is why a lot of people around here, you know, like we bail, Siders bails. So there is, I mean, there is some limitations. I would say the bigger limitation is probably the amount available. Like, if, I'll use another example of somebody I know, they have a very large farm with a large amount of your spanaway gravelly soils. I've tried even on, you know, one time I tried even on his decent ground, the disc, and I destroyed a disc in two days. But he is able to succeed because that's all he does is just grazes some cows. And then he buys hay in the winter and brings it in to feed cows. So there's, and I would go with, I mean, my personal opinion is that even if it's on this map, it's not really prime farmland. Cause you have one option. And what we're looking at, what I think we're supposed to be looking at is long-term commercial significance.
And I will say that, I mean, I tried to simplify this. I've got a much, much more robust spreadsheet. I had a lot of fun with this some late nights. But in addition to these, there's also ratings essentially that are assigned to different crops. And so for the, for the soils that are higher up, you've got a, a rating for how many crop yields per acre for a lot of different crops. When you get further down, Commissioner Nelson's right, when you get further down, it might only be one crop that you have a rating for, where you're getting a high yield per acre and then nothing for the other ones. And so pasture tends to hold on as well as like trees, like woodland, Christmas tree kind of stuff. But yeah, a lot of the other stuff just falls off.
One other question.
Yeah.
You and I might have talked briefly about that, but on the maps in the long-term agricultural paperwork, a lot of different maps with a lot of different options about soils and where we might apply this. But I was surprised that more in the Northern Peninsula, which I know historically had a large amount of things like berry farming. But it's largely gone away. And most of the maps that I saw, it was not included in future long-term ag designations, maybe under some variables. But not in most of the maps. And I guess I'm wondering, are we just giving that up? That that's never gonna be farmland and we're just gonna develop it? Or is there still potential for retaining farmland even up in the peninsula?
Yeah, I mean, I think more generally what we've heard, what we heard in the stakeholder work group and what we heard in public comment is that the kind of farms that are growing here in Thurston County or that exist today and probably, you know, have potential to exist long-term, they're smaller. They're fifteen acres or smaller. And that this zoning designation isn't really designed for that. And what we should really be talking about is an agricultural zone that is customized really to reflect the kind of farming that occurs here. That doesn't have as stringent of criteria and has more, if an opt-in and is really focused on that sort of farmland conservation. So, yes, I think it's a great thing to talk about. Probably as part of the periodic review. Okay, next, oh, yeah.
Just for, just for clarity, so right now, what we're looking at is one through three, right? And the four is excluded right now.
Your new maps?
Yeah.
New maps, we sort of, we did an illustration and of basically pulling all this out and what would that look like? Like, once you get to class four, it seemed like there were just a lot of limitations. And so for illustrative purposes, it was like, what would happen if it was just class one through class three included? But the choice of the planning commission is, do you even pick a cutoff? If you do pick a cutoff, what is it? Pierce County decided to cut off four S's. They excluded about seventy-one thousand acres from their prime farmland soils list by excluding, it was four different soil types. They were their steeper class four, last four S soils. And so they, they didn't, they're not currently reflected. They did that in about twenty-eight.
I read through this, I came across some data, and I don't know if it was in a report that you all provided or if it was in something else I researched, but I came across something listing the top commercial crops in Thurston County. Anybody know what they are, the top three? Anyone can guess the top?
Culture, chicken and poultry.
Yeah.
We haven't, we never talk about those three in any of this.
Cause you don't need trying farmlands for aquaculture or chicken poops.
And yeah, aquaculture, you think all that was.
Isn't it like hay and?
Those Christmas trees are like, what'll be really interesting is that when the updated census comes out, it's all based on older data. And we've actually had some, I think there's been some closures of some of the chicken operations. But yeah, the updated census will tell us a lot more about that and that is being tracked.
The chickens were a huge outlier. I mean, in the data, I mean, you know, it was like way up there compared to everything else.
All Wilcox.
But, well, I mean, while we're kind of discussing the current data, I mean, one, one thing I'm a bit confused about, I guess, is the terminology because most farms in Thurston County are under the median. I mean, most of them are like, you know, seventy-five percent or something of farms, according to the last census, are small. And also, at the same time, the definition of what's commercial is really loose, or, you know, it's, it's easy to qualify, you know, you don't have to make very much. And a lot of the, like, say a berry farm would, you could have a five-acre berry farm and it couldn't make enough to qualify. So I, I have to say, I've been a little confused about why we're not using a more accurate, you know, why we're not going to the smaller acreages that are more reflective of Thurston County agriculture? Like, why, why go with the median sides when there are relatively fewer farmers that do that? And you're basically excluding like seventy percent of the people that actually do what qualifies as, still qualifies as commercial agriculture.
Yeah, I mean, it's a long answer, cause it was something that was considered by the stakeholder work group. And if you apply just the criteria, cause it, the criteria gets applied whether it's an existing farm or not. And I think what the results in maps were, if you went to five acres or ten acres and it didn't take into consideration the existing use, it was pulling in like a hundred thousand acres of the county. And that's
The census was?
Or no, applying this designation criteria. You applied it to a smaller parcel with at least fifty percent of prime farmland soils that are on that twenty twenty-two list, not the refined, not any kind of refined soils list. It wasn't necessarily moving the number a lot in terms of your existing farms. But you were pulling in a lot of land that is not currently being farmed. And so that's where sort of this designing a zone as part of the, you know, the conference of plant update that is not necessarily applied in the same way that the long-term agriculture zone is. That reflects more what the current uses are. Like, under case law, we can't tie the application of the long-term agriculture zone to current use. And so there's always gonna be this, what we found in the map scenarios that we did for the stakeholder work group is this misalignment where you're trying to get at our smaller farm size, but we end up doing is just like pretty much a lot of, a lot of the rural area. So.
Yeah, we're not gonna tear down elementary schools, put them back in farms.
It was just a balancing. I think the stakeholder group recognized that agriculture is very important, but there's also a lot of other needs that need to be met out in a rural area. And so redescimating all these five-acre tending parcels. But fifteen acres was, you know, that one got held on to throughout the whole stakeholder worker process. It's like, well, let's take a look at what that, that one is. And that is a decision point for you all is do, does the county go down to fifteen instead of twenty? But just to stay on soils, are you ready for the next, our breakdown here in Thurston County of what the new prime farmland soils look like? So twenty-nine new prime farmland soils. Nine of those are class two or three, but as you can see in the maps, they don't reflect or represent a lot of the acreage. The rest of the soil types are class four to eight. And I pointed this out, but the class four soils are generally characterized by our prairies and lower woodland areas. And that's where you see the highest numbers. You've got the prime of irrigated. These are mostly four S's. There are some alder woods that are, they say they're four W's, but it's so funny in Pierce County, they're four S's. And so it's just, it's essentially a woodland soil type that has seasonal seasonal water. But think of these as mostly prime of irrigated and our prairies and influence. So that's where the bulk of the new soils are. These numbers do not add up to twenty-nine because some of them are identified as being both prime of drain and in prime of irrigated or protected from flooding. So I just wanted you to know, I, I do know that my math is wrong. As we think about the prairie soils, there are other conservation tools that the county has as well as, you know, JBLM has Sentinel Lands and they're go, they're actively trying to conserve prairie soils. The county, of course, has the Habitat Conservation Plan. It won't necessarily conserve all prairie soils, but I just wanted to point out that we, we keep saying long-term ag is one tool in the toolbox. And that at least for the prairie soils, there are some other conservation tools that are currently funded. And most of those concerts- Um, and most of those conservation efforts see agriculture as a co-beneficial use. It's more like agriculture in service of conservation rather than agriculture, um, for, you know, maximizing profits or whatnot, but agriculture is remaining on a lot of those sites. Um, the prime if drained, you know, those are the ones with your existing wetlands. Um, it would require, you know, I don't know how you would do it, but somehow getting a permanent drain of wetland and establish a farm on it. Existing farms can continue under BSP, but any type of new farm, you're not going to be able to establish it in those soils. Um. Questions or reflections on this? Does, does this information help sort of suss out? Um, a list of prime farmland soils? And is it information that the planning commissioner would like to use to refine the list of soils that are used for designated long-term agriculture?
I kind of feel like we have to use it that way. Um, the idea of not, not taking in the eight different classes. It just, it would gather too much, it gathers too much land that would be inappropriate to put into longer mag.
Oh, and one, I just noticed my notes tonight, I'll just throw it out there. A lot of the, um, a lot of the comment you heard from foresters, um, there on those lower woodland and the lower woodland areas. Um, and so we, we see the comments that, well, I guess, I found this illuminating because the public comments finally started to make sense in terms of like, oh, they must be talking about these soils on their property. Um. Any other thoughts?
Well, I guess I'm still having heartburn about excluding four, like four or the class four. Because, I mean, why, why exclude that? When there is agricultural production on class four soil in the county? Why, why, what's the rationale for stopping at three?
I think it's that sort of next level of how much, how much management is required to, to have that land be capable for agriculture? And what kind of amendments do you need to be able to operate in agricultural enterprise? Um, we've got some amazing farmers here in the county and I know that there are definitely ones making it work. Um, it's, but it's whether, you know, the planning commission gets to decide if that's, you know, commercially significant. If we talk about compensation or those lands at the county.
It's, it's not like people with class four soils that are actively farming are all of a sudden going to quit farming because they didn't get a LTA. Probably going to continue what they're going to do, no matter, no matter what their designation was anyways. Um, and the way I see this still is this whole LTA designation is forcing people into something o- other than the opt-in portion, there are people that do want to opt in, but this is us making decisions whether or not they have to be in, in agricultural zone. And if it's already pretty burdensome, because it looks like a lot of this class four stuff, especially if it is a wetland. It's never going to, there's no way we're ever going to be draining wetlands. Uh, to say that you can't do anything else besides ag, I, I, that gives me a lot of heartburn. Go, please, please tell me I'm wrong.
I know, I totally agree. Um, I wanted to talk about the public comments a little bit and just get your perspective, because I know you're trying to present a lot of changes based on public comment. Um, I, the two things I'll point out is one, I heard a large number of public comment. And it seemed like from the answers from staff that maybe some of the public comments didn't, the public commenters didn't fully understand what was being considered, um, or what, how these rules were going to apply. But by far, the one that probably stuck with me the strongest was the lady who was a farmer who said, you know, I spent my lifetime working hard at doing this and you're going to take away my retirement, basically, please don't do this. There were several people that said, please don't do this to us. Um, but how have you taken that in and incorporated that?
I mean, I think it's trying to understand what the concerns are. I mean, the county has an interest in, in conserving land for long-term agriculture. State law requires the county to set aside land. I think, you know, the interest in digging deeper was, so what kind of land should we be setting aside? If we're going to have those impacts on individuals, you know, making sure that you have as much information as possible to make those decisions. Um, and I didn't feel like before digging into this, at least at staff, at staff level, that a list of prime farmland soils was enough. I wasn't understanding or being able to sort of take those comments and ground them in information. Um, and so this is really just an attempt to give you more information so that you can start connecting, connecting those comments to the soils of these people.
As you just, you, you're trying to provide them is, was probably with the much more refined toolset than what they had by using the blunt force of a soil type. You're trying to add some refinements to it, so you can go, hey, yeah, maybe not this, maybe not that. So you lessen the impact on those property owners that are saying the county's taking away their retirement. Am I wrong in that?
Nope, much more eloquent way to say it.
I appreciate the refinement, I think that we're heading in the right direction, but I, I, I think I'd like to hear from the, the people who commented if, after they get a chance to see this, because it, it very well may.
Let's, let's have the opening, the public comment period backup discussion after we have this, but we will have that conversation.
Okay.
Yeah.
About that.
Yeah, I think.
I'd be interested to hear from those people again and to see if it changes the comments that we get or, or if we get more refined comments with more refined.
Let's have that conversation.
Data, yeah, okay.
Um, so you, you don't need a decision point on which map I need right now, do you?
No, unless there's one you just love, I mean, that would be.
I don't think we're.
Um, no, I think the kind of feedback that'd be helpful is, are you interested in using a more refined, a more refined approach? Um, and if so, is there like a cutoff point that you want us to like further explore or give you more information about? I mean, it sounds like the, the prime of drained is like a.
I, I think to honor some of the opinions that we've already shared in the room, having one set that cuts off at three and one set that cuts off at four.
Yeah.
To compare the two would be very helpful information.
Yeah, how about four, I, I, I'm, I'm hearing, like, so, so the four S's are the prime of irrigated. It sounds like the prime of drain, I've heard from a number of folks, at least, that the prime of drain, they're the four W's. Um, or the ones with wetlands.
Class one, two and three, a map that includes class one, two and three, and then a map that class, has class one through four. I, I think that, and maybe I'm wrong here, but it feels like five through eight is probably, probably a no-go for us anyways.
Likely out of the question.
Yeah.
I think fifty versus seventy-five is also where.
But that will be another part of the discussion as well, for sure. But when we're talking about just uh, um, the classes of soils.
And is there a strong, if, I'm just trying to um, get to a point where we're not doing iterative maps, but that you can sort of see, see is, is close to where you're, you're leaning already is in terms of including class fours. Do you feel strongly about prime if drain, class four W's versus prime if irrigated? Class four S's, because they will be different maps. And so it's really hard for us to, to guess what it's going to be, because you have to combine it with all these other criteria. And so just trying to refine it as much as possible.
Draining is easier than irrigating.
Drain, dr- draining.
Well.
Not from a.
It's the wetlands. Oh, okay.
I'm wondering about climate change.
Yeah, that's one of the things that I just started to think about.
I think we need to incorporate climate change into our thinking and that might include the prime is drained because climate might.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I started, was just thinking about right now is, what's the timeframe that we're looking at?
Twenty years.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going to happen in twenty years.
Yeah.
I will say prime if irrigated is the, there is less and less water, like water is diminishing. It is not.
Draining might be more likely than.
Sometimes it feels that way, I'm sure, yeah. I, I think both those issues are, are tough, so to me, they don't need to be.
Okay, parcel, okay.
Yeah, and the erosion one isn't, yeah.
So really quick on erosion, the farmlands of statewide importance, which is another decision point. Most of those are E's for erosion. So the only E's that I found in looking at a handful of soil surveys that are included in prime farmland soil lists are two E's. Once you get to a class three E, it gets bumped to farmlands of statewide importance because erosion is such a serious, serious concern. Um, and so overwhelmingly, farmland of statewide importance, um, have that E subclass. And I, it's a question for the planning commission, do you want us to consider including any of the farmland of statewide importance?
I, I had a question about that actually, because when I was looking at the WAC, it said prime and, you know, that, that um, long-term commercial significance includes both.
They just changed that state law. Yep, so that came out of the most recent session, so when we started this process, that wasn't there. And so following this conclusion of the stakeholder work group, um, that, that was finalized, which is why it's, it's available.
We have to, or is it's an and?
You can look at it in the same way. You can essentially say that using a land capability classification system, see whether those lands are really capable of supporting agriculture. And so you could look at it and say, we don't feel comfortable including all of these soils that are prone to erosion um, for our long-term agriculture. The difference, or the, the opportunity it provides is, you know, if, if a county wanted to use them, wanted to consider them.
So it's not mandatory when it says the and?
It's non-exclusive, it's non-exclusive criteria, so it's the same way you use your prime farmland soils. So if you look at state law above that criteria, um, is your, um, using the land capability classification system. And then when you get down to your non-exclusive criteria, it's prime farmland soils and farmland of statewide importance. And so, um, which is, which is why we're having this conversation. It's like, oh, yes, we can use that, we can use that more refined, um, analysis. So any, any feelings about the farmland of statewide importance, um, at this juncture?
I guess I really want some more input from the public.
Yeah, the, what we heard from the public, at least so far on that, was um, having it be part of the comprehensive plan update, because it, it is a, is a very recent change in state law. Um, it would be nice to take a closer look at them on a map. When I looked at them, they're mostly forested, um, a lot in the Delphi region. Um, you're looking at a lot of soils that support timber and that are prone to erosion. And given all the other decisions, it seemed like maybe tabling that one until later.
I think we're edging towards a consensus on having a more public comment, but without actually getting there, why don't we discuss farmland or soils of statewide significance at that, including that and part of that discussion, so.
Yeah, do you, um, it's, it's still with us, she's been so, so patient, um, walking through the maps.
Yeah.
That's okay, and it sounds like soils, seeing, seeing an illustration of what it would look like, which is five through eight. Taking out.
Great, so walking through the maps, uh, we have a new map series in this packet. And that uses the refined soils list with a land capability classification, classification cutoff of three, two and one. Um, so everything below three is not included in the maps. And uh, the other thing we heard in public comment is that we should add in parcels that are contiguous and less than the actual parcel size limitation that we have. So we took a closer look at that and made sure that we were meeting that. Um, that's actually recent clarifications in the WACs that the predominant parcel size is not intended to be a hard cutoff but more of a um, kind of flexible. So uh, we, we reran that GIS analysis to add back in parcels that were either less than twenty acres or less than fifteen acres, depending on which option they fell under. If they were adjacent to some of the new long-term agricultural lands and currently used for agriculture. And otherwise, uh, the criteria in this new series of maps matches the original set of maps aside from that refined soils list and the uh, change in the adding back in parcels that were smaller. So I just want to say that over the three options, this adds about eighty new landowners that were not originally notified uh, through, through the first public hearing. And that's, that's primarily because of that add parcels back in that are smaller than kind of that cutoff clause. And our, we do have a plan to notify those people moving forward. What we would like to do is hold a open house following the planning commission's process and really focus on the planning commission recommendation at that open house, but have discussion on all of the other pieces. And at that time, we would send out a mailing to all of the new folks that are affected by the new map series. And then uh, for, for the board's review process, we would then do a second mailing, just like we did for planning commission for that public hearing that goes out to everyone that is affected by any of the map options that are considered at the board level. Uh, so there will be several more noticing and opportunity points. And uh, we do plan to engage any new people before we get to the board's review process. So moving to the next slide. Uh, these are presented, I'll do a side-by-side scenario, just so you can see um, an illustration about the differences in kind of the new areas, and then we'll do a large screen view. So here is what the first series versus the second series looks like for our baseline scenario and then scenario X. And uh, the criteria on these maps, these use all of the same as our current designation criteria. Um, fifty percent prime farmland soils, two hundred to three hundred and twenty acre block size, and then twenty acres or greater. But uh, the baseline map on the left uses the full list of new prime farmland soils, all twenty-nine of them. And then the map on the right uh, uses that refined soils list. And so we go down, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I, I really apologize for interrupting really quick, but I wanted to let you know that the class five to eight soils on the baseline map only represented thirty-four acres.
Okay.
So it's probably not worthwhile to generate new maps, it won't show anything different, and in the following maps, it's even less, so. Anyway, sorry, Maya.
Yeah, and, and so, I mean, without creating new maps, just to Ashley's point, the map on the right shows the classes one through three. The map on the left shows classes one through eight of all the prime farmland soils. And so the difference is really the fours, if, if I'm thinking about this correctly. That, that's kind of that illustration, everything that's left out is the fours, and most of that is woodland, uh, rocky soils. A lot of wetlands in those areas, and um, a lot of those are actually the forest landowners that came and testified at the public hearing. So moving on to the next map, this is just what scenario X looks like. Again, using that refined soils list and all the other criteria is the same as what's currently in the comp plan. And this is about twenty-two hundred, twenty-four hundred acres on that first map. And then uh, the next series, we have scenario one and scenario Y. This jumps the threshold up to seventy-five percent or more, prime farmland soils must be on the property in order to be included. And then the block size is reduced to a hundred acres and the parcel size is kept at twenty acres. So again, on the left, you have all of your land capability classifications and all twenty-nine new prime farmland soils. On the right, you only have one through three, and so the difference between the two maps is the fours that are kind of removed. And that goes from twelve thousand to about twenty-three hundred acres. And then the last two to compare. Uh, so we have a side-by-side scenario two and scenario Z. And uh, the left uh, shows, again, parcel threshold must have seventy-five percent or more prime farmland soils. Block size is reduced even further down to forty acres or anything greater than that. And parcel size, the majority of the parcels must be fifteen acres or larger. And uh, again, on the left, all of your land capability classification, one through eight. And then on the right, you have one through three, and the difference of that is your fours that are primarily removed. Since the bottom three are such a small acreage. And so scenario Z is kind of our biggest of the new map series at 7,200 acres. There are, you can see there's a lot of smaller blocks in this one, since the block size is reduced. And this is the one that actually, um, does have, I believe this one does have a current mine that's impacted. So, um, some of the decisions we made earlier would be affected by this and we could pull those out. Next slide. And the next couple of slides were a request from Commissioner Day at the last meeting to go over, uh, the forest land information and also the agriculture, existing agriculture information. So we broke this down by all of the options into the table and we are seeing the acreage of forest land go down in the new options. However, the percentage does go up in some cases. So comparing baseline to scenario X, we're going from 31% in baseline to about 47% in scenario X being, uh, used for some type of forest land. And then in scenario one and scenario Y, we have about 34% uh, for forest land down to 30%. So that's actually a reduction. And then the last two maps are fairly close, 30% and 32%. And most of those acres are actually designated forest land. So I, I do want to note that change in zoning doesn't affect the landowner's participation in the tax program. It just affects the underlying zoning and they could still be in that tax program if they wish. And so moving on to agriculture, um, comparing again, so the way we mapped existing agriculture is we, we used what we had, which is land use codes and also the Washington State Department of Agriculture crop land data. And so the numbers you see here are slightly different than what we've had in the past. And that's because that crop land data layer, we, we expanded that to include the whole parcel acreage. And so for our baseline versus our scenario X, uh, about 52% in the baseline and 40% in scenario X. Scenario one versus scenario Y, we have 40% versus 37%. And then scenario two versus scenario Z, 44% versus 53% uh, are existing farms. And so these are fairly close in percentages. Again, your acreage of existing farms is going down, but the overall percentage between options is fairly similar in most cases. And so I have a couple more slides to just get through the rest of the presentation and then we can have a discussion. Just recapping some of the decision points for the planning commission for this meeting and for future meetings. Delaying the cluster requirement for further consideration. I think we received a thumbs up from the planning commission tonight to kick that to the periodic update. So we can look at it more holistically. Revisions to code designation policies. We did get a thumbs up on, uh, excluding existing mines that are gravel pits from the new LTA where applicable. And then the other policy language, uh, still for further discussion. We do have the code changes about, uh, flexibility and clarity for agricultural operators. So, um, any recommendation on that from the planning commission at this sort of future meeting? And then in terms of the agricultural designation criteria, we have several points for the planning commission. The first is the refined soils list and what the cutoff ends up being. The second being including farmlands of statewide importance and whether or not to investigate that now or, uh, as part of the periodic update. Um, as Ashley mentioned, what we heard from people who commented in favor of including those is that we should probably look at it more holistically with the periodic update where we can look at a bigger opt-in clause, maybe an additional agricultural zone and just really hammer in kind of a holistic approach in conservation of agriculture that's beyond just our long-term agriculture zoning. Uh, percent of a parcel that must be prime farmland soils. We have, uh, two options, 75% and our current 50%, which is in the comp plan and the existing language. Predominant parcel size, 20 acres and 15 acres are both on the table. And then the block size requirement. And right now the county uses 200 to 320 acres. And the other considerations are 100 acres or 40 acres. And those are in the map series that are presented to the planning commission. And so this is the same timeline. Uh, we are hoping to have a final action by the board by the end of the year on this project in order to stay, uh, consistent with our, um, extended settlement. And we're going through appeal on this item. And then our next slide, we do have one additional work session budgeted for the planning commission on July 19th, where we can work through some remaining issues. And now we're happy to open it up for discussion.
I have a question. If, can you bring up the slide that shows, uh, scenario two versus scenario Z? Um, my understanding is that, oh, the map, I'm sorry, that shows the two side by side. My understanding is that this, that scenario Sarah two would include everything on scenario Z plus the, the type fours, five, sixes, maybe. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
The original scenario?
Original scenario.
Had all, all the prime farmland soils reflected in this one only has the class one through three soils reflected?
I'm not. Then how do, how do you explain the very southeast corner of Tumwater that on the second map, the green area is larger than on the?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. And so on, in all of these scenarios, the map on the right is going to have some blocks that are a little bit larger. And the reason for that is in the new maps, the other thing beyond the refined soils list that we did was we looked at contiguous parcels that were either within the block or, um, touching the perimeter of the block that were less than the parcel size. So in this case, less than 15 acres. And we pulled them in if they were used for existing agriculture. And that was based on public comment that we received from future wise. That's also based on some recent changes in state law that encourage us uh, to, um, look beyond the predominant parcel size. It's not kind of a hard and fast cutoff. It's more of the majority of your parcels should meet that size. So that's how we approached that. And, um, we pulled in a little bit of extra land that way.
That would speak to your feedback about pulling in existing, some additional existing farms.
Good. Drew, uh, the scenarios I'm seeing show sort of a combination of most restrictive on soil threshold, but then lesser restrictive on block size and parcel size versus less restrictive on sale threshold down to 50%, but more restrictive on the others. Is there, is there anything where we're comparing all three of those elements at the most restrictive versus the least?
I think, I think the intent with the scenarios that were developed with the stakeholder work group is sort of these, these bookends, like trying to find bookends, knowing that it'd be a combination of them that the planning commission would wind up recommending, but that's sort of the intent there behind sort of the.
These are a bunch of reasonable ideas, but there's no actual outliers.
Yeah. I mean, it was, they, uh, had consensus on some of the criteria, um, and not, and not all of them. The baseline was always going to be there. Um, the reason that you have scenario one and scenario two is because there wasn't a consensus out of the stakeholder work group that it should, like on, on the block size or the parcel requirement. But there was consensus on the swaps.
So you don't need any other decisions from us today?
Unless you want to give us more, I mean, I'm going back to that decision point list. There was the question about the accompanying code changes. Um, and whether there's any additional feedback on that. Um.
Anybody ready to move forward on those ones yet?
Or if not, is there anything additional you need next work session?
I, I, I think that nicely leads into the conversation about whether or not we want to hear some more public comment on this. And that might inform our decision on, or might inform us on some of the decision-making we have to make on those issues. Jeremy, if we wanted to reopen public comment on this, would we narrow the scope of our public comment? And how would we do that?
I highly recommend that you narrow the scope of the public comment to the affected proprietors, if that's the direction of the planning commission. I would caution against opening it up wider.
I didn't mean on who could comment, but on what we're.
Subject. I'm talking about subject. Yeah.
Yeah.
We're talking about the subject. So where than likely, I would think that we would notify those affected property owners directly. Um, through this process, if we go that direction. Of course, staff did provide an avenue for those comments, those affected proprietors to provide comment in the process further along.
I, I think just from fielding lots of phone calls, and I know Maya has as well, there's a lot of uncertainty out there. And so to the extent that a more narrow, a more narrow list of options, um, would, would help the public try to navigate, like, uh, am I on the map? Am I not on the map? Like which scenarios are moving forward? Um, so, and that, that's why we had proposed that open house between this process and the board process was to kind of, okay, we've got a map. Now we know who's going to be affected, at least moving into this board process, notifying them, giving them ample opportunity to talk to staff, process, process, you know, all these potential changes and be able to participate in that board process.
I'm, I might be speaking out of turn here. So tell me guys if, if I'm wrong here, but it, it would seem like we're, we'd be pretty easily, it'd be pretty easy for us to get away from scenario one or two, and then just talk about scenarios X, Y, or Z. And if that was the case, could we just ask for public comments? Let the public know that we are considering X, Y, and Z, and we'd like to hear their comment on X, Y, and Z.
I am looking to for just sort of a histor- any historical. Um, and I just know that the channels by which we communicate and those nuances get get difficult, um, because it'll probably, it's probably going to be webmail. And, you know, legal notices, um.
Does open reopening public comment necessitate also having another public hearing?
Um, not necessarily. You could do a written public commentary about the public hearing, but again, we traditionally do not do that. Traditionally, um, when the planning commission makes refinements to a recommendation, you finish your recommendation forward to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. And any changes that may have happened after your public hearing are then considered by the board at their public hearing. People can comment then. And staff is again providing an avenue for that comment in an extra open house following planning commission process to allow the citizens to come in directly and ask staff in person their questions on what the changes mean for them. So there is still ample opportunity in the open house process to comment after the planning commission process. You can make changes to area-wide rezones in a legislative process and you can include more areas in it. You don't have to have more public comment on that necessarily. Because the planning commission recommendation is just that at this point, it's a recommendation, not the final decision. Um, if the board were to come out and make a large scale changes, we would probably recommend they or public comment on that for making a final decision because they're making a final decision on that. So, go ahead.
Uh, I think the key differentiating word is differentiating word there is refinements. If all we're making is refinements, I don't see strong reason for us to reopen public comment, but if we're making dramatic changes, that's more than a refinement that would seem to justify that. So I don't know where we're at on this. I don't yet see that we're making dramatic changes. What I heard though, there was like 80 additional parcels or homeowners that were being affected now. And that, that have not had an opportunity to say, or say their piece, but that would be, they would be contacted with through the open house process if they wanted to come to that.
Right. We would do a separate mailing, uh, just for them before the open house, just to make sure that we're reaching out to them. Um, so we, we do plan to do an individual mailing to that. And that's kind of an additional step of the process that we're planning for.
And, and, and I will say 80 is the biggest number, but depending on which scenario, it could be a smaller scenario or a smaller number.
As low as 13.
As low as 13 to 80.
Commissioner Day, did you have something?
Yeah, thanks. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. So I was wondering, would it be possible to do the open house before the planning commission makes its final recommendation? To kind of, um, instead of reopening public comment. But I would imagine we might hear things or get like some, some feedback during that process that we might be able to incorporate into some decision-making. And just, I think that might give us the opportunity to really get at what we heard in the public comment earlier today and really just make space for people to feel like they have input before it moves without them being able to do or being able to engage. I wonder if that is a possibility. Um, if we just have that open house before the planning commission makes a final recommendation, just so it feels to people like the train's not leaving the station without them.
So I think Jeremy and I are looking at each other, trying to figure out how that would fit in with legal requirements for, if you're going to take into consideration, it has to be a public comment period.
Yeah, you'd want to have a public comment period open for actually, to actually consider any comments received at an open house by the planning commission. Um, especially once you've already closed your public hearing. Uh, when you're doing your public hearing, you're establishing basically parties of record. People who comment at your public hearing become a party of record added for appeal later on. You're just taking comments in an open house. It's not, not doing that.
So where, so where do the comments at the open house go?
Those comments would end up going to the Board of County Commissioners if the open house is after the planning commission session. So they still will be considered by the board in their process and presented to them.
Yeah. And I, and I think at least our, our hope with that open house was to have a more finalized version, um, that we're noticing people on and that they're commenting on versus, you know, potentially six different options.
Well, and, and please remember, I believe that Maya had a schedule of trying to get this done by December of this year at the latest. And that really is the last meeting of the board meeting of the year, which is like two weeks into December. So it's not even the end of the month. Um, and we're also heading into the budget season with the board. And so we are hoping to bring this to the board sooner so that we can get it done and address the challenge. That hearing's for a challenge too, and get that over with. Um, the board can, I'm finding commission, the board can always revisit some of these issues in the conference of plan update as well. So just because you make a decision now doesn't foreclose options later, especially if you're going to reopen the clustering provisions later to accommodate agricultural provisions. So we have another opportunity.
Commissioner Hands, did you have something? Well, I guess the.
I, I just wanted, I think I pretty much agree with what Commissioner Custnier said earlier. I so far haven't seen anything that would make me think that we need another public hearing. I mean, all of this, if you look at the designation criteria, all of that was presented in the public hearing. I don't know that anything else is a big change. So, I mean, I, I can only remember, I think, one time that we've done something and I've been like, oh, we, we need to open this up again because we did, you know, we, we strayed so far away from what we had proposed. Which I know legally, we're the planning commission and it still goes to the board. So that's, but I think I've always said there's, you know, there's what's lea- what we have to do legally and what's right. And so I think we need to just try to get through this. And hopefully there's, we don't just come out and completely blow up all this work that's been done. And we just come up with something that's presented here and we move that forward to the board.
Well, looking around the room and seeing a lot of head nodding, not consensus. It doesn't look like anybody is really needing to open up public comment more. Uh, feeling that the public will still be heard at the other levels of this process. But if somebody wanted to make a case for it, still now's the time to do it.
My, my concern is just those, those 80 additional homeowners that they get hurt.
And they'll get caught.
And it doesn't, you know, if it's not here, then that's fine.
Okay. Well, then we probably don't need to reopen public comment. Um, but you probably do, would like to get another one or two of the things off your list today, and then we can finish up at our next meeting.
That would be great. If, if, I mean, I, I know it's getting late.
We're running, yeah, we are running.
Yeah. And so if there the farmland of statewide importance, um, is one that might be an easier one.
That one probably would be an easy one.
Um, and, 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 and just so you know, um, if we did consider it at this point, it would add a lot more than 80 new property owners. There are thousands and thousands of acres that are in that list. And so if you are concerned about bringing new people into the fold, that would be a concern with that one. And so if you are concerned about bringing new people into the fold, that would be a concern with that one. Um, tackling it now versus during the comprehensive
Let's thumbnail this, bringing in farmlands of statewide importance. Everybody that wants to do, give us a thumbs. So we're not, we're going to save that for the periodic update.
Okay.
And these other ones look like they're going to take a little bit more talking through to get through. So if we could save those for our next work session, that would probably be okay if that's okay with you folks.
Yes, so the, the code changes, any feelings about that at this point? I, I'm just trying to, if, the rest of them are all map focused, um, or more, yeah, primarily map focused. And so is there anything additionally you need? And those are the updates to the agriculture tourism chapter and the long-term ag chapter. I know Commissioner Wheatley has brought up a good, a good concern about using acronyms. Um, but is there any, any substantive concerns that was really just trying to expand that list of uses to?
Anybody need more information on that, or you just want to come back with the discussion at the next meeting?
I think discussion, I mean, I'd just say there's a comment in here about nuisance complaints. My preference would be that we just leave that as it is. Because A, until Thurston County rewrites their right to farm act and allows farmers to recover court costs for nuisance complaints. The farmer doesn't, I mean, if somebody files a nuisance complaint on me and it goes to court, I have to pay it out of my pocket. And I think that's um, I, I mean, I think what we have here and what's even proposed and which says language added on page three eight, three nine. The ability of owners or occupants to recover for nuisances arising from activities on the designated agricultural land may be restricted. Well, that's pretty much, I mean, that is covered in right form. You know, you, you can't actually win by filing a nuisance complaint about and uh, existing ongoing practice.
And then there was that last question you had asked for a new set of maps. You feel comfortable not getting a new set since it's only thirty four acres. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, and yeah, and I think the four Ws represent about fourteen hundred acres. It's, I just want to leave you with that big number, the big difference is mostly your four Ss. Wait, it's hard to pinpoint exactly what it is because of all the different variables, but it's mostly your four Ss, your prime irrigated.
Well, thank you, Ashley and Maya for getting us this far and hopefully we'll be able to finish up for you at the next meeting. I expect we'll be able to finish up for you at the next meeting. With that, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, other business, which would be a staff update with manager Davis, interns manager Davis.
True. So um, really quick, we do want to remind the planning commission to go in and fill out the doodle poll for the city of Lacey. And having joint meetings, so please make sure you go and do that doodle poll that was emailed out. If you need that sent again, we can get that sent back out to you again. Um, and then also, um, just as an update on outreach. Um, so I know Maya gave you an hour, an update on our Juneteenth outreach that we did. Um, we also went to the disqualified pride and health event um, on June thirtieth. So there were three hundred event participants there with eighty individuals reached by Thurston County with forty three surveys on Thursday, twenty forty five filled out. Um, and the overall themes from that were protect your natural resources, filling safe for as LGBTQ plus supportability of living in Thurston County. Um, and uh, our education outreach specialist said that it's another great event, um, event with engaged interested people. So another event, we tried to reach out to other folks, so. Um, and with that, that's all I've got.
Good. All right, let's go on to our calendar. We do have our joint plan meeting with the city of Yelm on Monday. Um, I'm hoping everybody can make that because we're going to need a quorum for that. They're going to need a quorum. It's a pretty important one. Is there anybody that's not expecting to be able to make our Monday meeting? I think Commissioner Halverson was still maybe on that, wasn't he, or is he an owl? We'll check. Okay, hopefully everybody else will be there. And then on the nineteenth, we're going to hopefully have our final long-term ag zoning amendment update work session. Is uh, anybody expecting not to be able to make the July nineteenth meeting? All right, hopefully everybody will be there. So for the good of the order, we uh, have an opportunity to discuss the meeting that planning commission held with the Board of County Commissioners. And um, got some notes on that. It was a ninety minute meeting. It was a good meeting. So if anybody wants to uh, talk about that or have some thoughts on it, I'd love to hear them.
Well, I, it looks like um, there was general agreement that it's a good idea to
Meet more often?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twice a year.
Yeah, I think they're going to try to schedule some for twice a year. We'll see how that goes. Uh, it probably, I don't know if we'd have another one this year, just because hopefully we'll have one starting off. Um, beginning of next year when we have five commissioners too, which would probably be a good time to have them. So, uh, but obviously I don't plan it. That's not my decision, but I, that's what I would expect.
I, I, I agree. Um, I actually ran into Commissioner Edwards. Um, shortly thereafter at a Qantas meeting. Um, and he, he was saying that he, he really would like for us to have the dinner and, and or lunch and meetings again. Um, rather than just here in the boardroom. Um, because he felt that, that that gave us an opportunity to get to know each other a little bit better. Um, and I agree with him. Um, so
I hope it's a question of and and not or.
Yeah.
We can do both.
Yeah, it'd be nice to do all of the above, in my opinion.
Commissioner Day, did you have anything on, on our meeting with the board?
I don't think anything of note. Thank you, Chair.
Anybody else? Did we miss anything? All right. Well, does anybody else have anything else for the good of the order? All right, well, having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Go out to lunch at the